Council chambers, 1110 Houston Street, Laredo, Texas, July 29, 12:00 PM. All stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence, please.
May I pray for the police officer who lost her life yesterday in New York?
Thank you, may be seen. All right, we'll proceed with item number five. Roll call.
Mayor Ray B. Roll call. Honorable Mayor Dr. Victor D. Trevino.
Present.
Honorable council member District One, Gilbert Gonzalez. Honorable council member District Two, Ricardo Raquel Jr.
Present.
Honorable council member District Three, Melissa Sigarroa. Honorable council member District Four, Ricardo Rick Garza. Honorable council member District Five, Ruben Gutierrez Jr.
Present.
Honorable council member District Six, Dr. Tyler King.
Here.
Honorable Mayor Portem and District Seven Council Member Vanessa Perez. Honorable council member District Eight, Alyssa Sigarroa.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Mayor, motion to excuse the members that are missing from council?
Second.
Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Both, motion pass. Proceed with item number five, communications.
Good afternoon. Want to thank everyone for being here today, for those watching at home, at this special call meeting. Understand that we have a lot of city business on our plate during the regularly scheduled meetings, but our duties as council are not part-time. They're not part-time responsibilities, so we have to address them before they become unmanageable. This special seated council meeting is important because I wanted to make sure that we continue to address and improve our core functions as a local government. This goes directly in how we improve the quality of our life in our community through public health, public safety, infrastructure, and other core functions of the city. When it comes to public safety, I do want to highlight the recent loss of our safest city status in Texas, Laredo, Texas. Well, Laredo's still considered a safe city. Studies show that other cities have outperformed us in 41 safety measures used by some of the studies, which include traffic deaths, violent crimes, sexual assaults, and police retention and compensation, to name a few. So this trajectory is something that we need to address, and I believe, after looking at other municipalities that may have been doing better in these areas, it starts with our police department retention and stability. And that means looking at where we're going to be in a year, two years, or even three years from now. And as everyone is aware, Laredo, like most communities, is at a crossroads when it comes to addressing public safety. But unlike most communities, Laredo's border community and the number-one port of entry is faced with unique challenges associated with transnational criminal organizations involved in drug and human trafficking and exposure to acts of terrorism. This is not helped by the reality that homeless security was given a significant budget and a mandate by the president to hire more agents. The issue then becomes that we end up training officers to the tune of over $120,000 per officer, and then have to let them go to work to other agencies. We're going to see this impact, if not seeing this reality already, so we have to adapt. Because the loss of the safety city status is not just a statistic, it's a status. So with that being said, I would like to bring up my agenda item, which is discussion with possible action to instruct management to enhance incentives and retention policies within the city of Laredo to mitigate the potential departure of Laredo police officers to other law enforcement agencies and any matters related thereto.
Second.
My initial motion would be to instruct management to create and reinforce retention policies within the police department, which could consist of what we have done in the past, like four-year contracts, to create policies that would contractually obligate new police officers that go to the police academy to stay a duration of time with the Laredo Police Department.
Second for discussion, Mayor.
We have a second for discussion.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
As you all know, we are firmly in CBA negotiations with the LPWA. Because there's negotiations ongoing, because I'm the appointed lead negotiator from the city manager, I advise that council goes into executive session to discuss this pursuant to 551.071, Consultation on the Trade.
All right, noted. This is going to be policy discussion, not negotiations. Noted. Thank you. Motion second, according to executive session?
Second.
Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Both, motion pass. Executive session.
Mayor, point of order, before we go into executive session, I know we have four public comments on this particular item. Can we bring that back before we go into executive session?
Yes.
Please. My motion is to open up public comments.
Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Both, motion pass.
Mayor, you have four public comments.
Four comments, correct.
All right.
Recognition for attendance, please. Councilwoman Melissa Sigarroa, council member Rick Garza. No further to, please, for the record, to reflect that they're here.
No, President, thank you. Yes, sir. First public comment is Eduardo Ablos.
Want to press anything, Mayor?
No, you're on.
Oh, you're on.
Your name for the record, please.
For the record, my name's Sergeant Eduardo Ablos. I am the president for the Laredo Police Officers Association. With me is Sergeant David Carmona, his first vice president for the Laredo Police Officers Association.
Excuse the interruption again, but let the record reflect that councilwoman and Mayor Portem, Vanessa Perez, is present. Noted, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Just stand in the middle. You don't need the mic, but I'll pick up the mic.
The red dot will pick you up right there on your left hand.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Council Members.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I'm here on behalf of the men and women of the Laredo Police Officers Association, not just to speak for them, but to stand with them as we speak for something that's long overdue, a competitive race and a realistic plan to retain our officers. We're proud to serve this city. Our officers show up every single day to respond to the toughest calls, from violent crimes to mental health crisis, from domestic violence to deadly overdoses. They serve with integrity, compassion, and courage, but behind the badge, there's growing frustration. We're losing officers. We're struggling to recruit. Why? Because we're being outpaced by other departments offering higher pay, better benefits, and clear career paths. Federal agencies are aggressively recruiting the very officers we train, officers who grew up here, built trust here, and want to stay here if we give them a reason to. It costs thousands of dollars to train a single officer. When that officer leaves, after just a few years, we don't just lose money, we lose experience, leadership, and stability in our department that has a direct impact on public safety and response times. We've asked them to do more with less for far too long. We cannot afford to lose more experienced officers or fail to attract new ones. Public safety is not an optional line item. It is a foundation of every thriving city. Honorable council members and honorable mayor, we're not asking for handouts. We're asking for investment. It's about retention, morale, and showing our officers that Laredo stands behind them. We ask you, as city leaders, to help us keep Laredo one of the safest cities in Texas, not just with words, but with action. Thank you for your time, your partnership, and your continued support of the Laredo Police Department.
Thank you. Next comment is Scott Leighton.
I'm the president of the Combined Law Enforcement Associations of Texas. Mayor and honorable council members, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak here before you. I've been a police officer for 40 years, and this cycle that Laredo is enduring with the retention is something that we're seeing nationwide, to the point where the department I'm with has already done a contract re-opener to try to improve benefits because of the retention issue. As I mentioned, I've been an officer for 40 years, and if you take technology out of the equation, I've seen a multitude of changes, but the biggest is in personnel itself. So there's two big examples I use. I think all law enforcement agencies are like NFL teams. They're all looking for the best free agents and the best recruits coming out of college, and that's exactly what Laredo and everybody else is doing. On top of that, when an officer separates from the department, it's taken you almost two years in time and the financial money, as everyone has alluded to, to replace that officer. So you just can't add water and instantaneously bring an officer to the department. Studies show that it takes five years to make an officer fully rounded in the job that they do. And Mayor, I think your opening statement said it the best. Y'all are at a crossroads. This is pivotal for the community of Laredo. You have the federal government, as the mayor said, throwing a ton of money because y'all are in a unique situation with the border right here. So I would implore you, these folks are not asking to be the highest paid in the state, they just want to be competitive. So I would implore you to please work with them. They have made a commitment to you, make a commitment to them. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Next comment is Robert Leonard.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, members of council. My name is Robert Leonard. I am the executive director for the Combined Law Enforcement Associations of Texas, commonly referred to as CLEET, and I speak here today on behalf of the men and women of the Laredo Police Officers Association. The Laredo Police Officers Association was one of the key founding groups of CLEET. We now represent over 27,000 law enforcement professionals across the state of Texas. One of the biggest and most important things that we're seeing as we go around the state and negotiate contracts for our members is the fact that all of these organizations are suffering from the same thing that the Laredo Police Department is suffering from. They are suffering from a staffing shortage. Currently, there are about 70 open positions in the Laredo Police Department. As the mayor so pointedly said in his opening remarks, the only way to keep a city safe and to keep the quality of life at a high level is to ensure that your police department is fully staffed with qualified and experienced officers. We see it all around the country. Police departments are poaching from one another by offering big signing bonuses of $30,000, $40,000, $50,000. They're offering experienced officers the opportunity to come over and start at a higher step level because they want that experience. And now you're faced with another situation where the President of the United States has directed Homeland Security and Border Patrol to start hiring more agents, and they're hiring at significantly higher wages than what these officers are receiving today. When the last contract was done, the city of Laredo asked its officers to step up and help out. They took two years of zeros, two. That's unheard of today. They're asking you to do the right thing. They put their faith and trust in the city when they took those zeros. Economics should not be a factor in this. I know that everybody talks about tariffs and about what's going on, but as you see in the press, those issues are being resolved. The city's finances are strong, the economy is strong, the tariff issues are being resolved. The greatest way to ensure financial success for a city is to ensure that its labor contracts are there and are permanently set out years in advance. It gives you a level of certainty. Doing one-year deals keeps the city in the dark about what the future holds. If you do a four- or five-year contract, you know what your obligations and costs are, and you can budget appropriately. That's why it's so important to treat the men and women of the Laredo Police Officers Association, the Laredo Police Department fairly, and to give the city peace of mind to allow you to know what your costs and operating expenses will be for future budgets. Please treat the men and women of the Laredo Police Department fairly. Give them a multi-year contract at a fair and reasonable wage. Thank you for your time.
Next comment is Todd Harrison.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. I apologize, I'm from way east, so you may not directly understand me. My name's Todd Harrison. I'm the director of field services for CLEET. I'm the previous president. I'm a retired sergeant out of the city of Austin. I'm the one that's in charge of the people doing the contracts all across the state. In the past two years, El Paso County, El Paso, Brownsville, McAllen, Beaumont, San Antonio, and you're facing a problem everyone's facing, and everyone else has pretty well said that. I'm here speaking for the members of the association, but I'm also here speaking on behalf of your citizens. Your citizens deserve a safe city, and you may not think about it, or you may not realize it, having that safest city tag on Laredo has a value. It has a value to businesses looking to relocate and bring their production into the Laredo community, but it also has a value to the citizens of Laredo, and it's a pride they can take. You can't continue to do the same things the same way with short deals and short-term fixes to long-term problems. That's why it's in the best interest to give a contract that lasts more than a year, more than two years. I personally think three to four is a good watermark to get because it gets you stability. Like they say, it's taken you almost two years to get an officer hired when you lose one. And that's not all on y'all, it's just the nature of the beast. But then, five years, they're getting almost where they're not scaring the chief of police to death every night when he goes to bed that he's got a bunch of rookie officers out there protecting the citizens of Laredo. So I thank you for listening to me, and I thank you for bringing this up, Mr. Mayor, and I just pray that you do the right thing for your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go into executive session, I'd like to call Chief Rodriguez. He gonna tell us?
Yes. Just a question for the record, for equal. When was the last time we negotiated a 12-month span with this department?
I don't think we ever have to do so.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. So as your chief of police for the city, I echo every single word that this gentleman had come here before you to announce their feelings as to what the current landscape is in policing. We are facing, we are facing with some challenges, and I can tell you that we've never seen this type of action before, especially during the time that I've been here in the police department, which is about 26 years already. So I know we're going into executive session to discuss a little bit in depth as to what we're currently experiencing, but I can tell you that a lot of these officers are still coming into work with a lot of passion to serve their community. We continue to focus, you know, they have a lot of pride, they don't want to lose that safest city mark, right? We're still the safest city in Texas, but they keep on working every day to make sure that they provide that safety for our community. This year, I can tell you that we're double digits here to date on almost every single crime, and I can tell you that we continue working and pivoting to things that we've never done before so that we can catch up to the stuff that we need to catch up. So I know that as your chief, and as your chief, and as the chief of this community, we continue working very hard to make sure that we provide that safety net to our community. One of the things that we keep on talking about is how we're going to pivot into our shifts, right? How we're going to be reorganizing our police department. A lot of it has to do with technology, yes, I agree on that, but the person responding to priority wants is of utmost importance, and so every time that we look at our maps, we're trying to figure out ways to be able to be responsive within less than five minutes. As time passes, we're right now at 210 at patrol level. We're supposed to be at 218, eight are on modified duty. Our strength in patrol should be at 240. And the reason we're not at 240 is because of the fact that we had a lot of retirements. We had resignations. We had people that have gone fired. And so to maintain the level of integrity and the level of trust that the public has for the police department, we have to continue with this motion as we're doing now. So again, we are, the current landscape right now, it's a little bit iffy, but I can tell you that we see ourselves, we see a bright future. I know that this council, and we've been working with management through this, I know that we were going to continue with the motion of going through this contract, and we continue facing these challenges, but together, right?
Right, Chief. Mayor, final, your comment.
Yeah, one question, Chief. Is there a shortage right now of police officers?
There is a shortage, yes, sir. Mayor, I know that in the past, right, I know the newspaper put that we have 451 people showing up for the test. In the past, we have upwards of 800 people showing up to take the test. So there is a difference, right? And so there is 70, we're 70 officers short. Again, we continue navigating through that as fast as we can to get the officer level at the capacity that we're supposed to be.
All right, go ahead, council.
Just a quick comment, so all of you ladies and gentlemen out there know, we do appreciate you. The job you've done for this city is unbelievable, and it goes without saying, you all are doing a tremendous job, from the top all the way to the bottom, to every single officer out there, every administrator out there, thank you for everything you do. And I promise, every comment, every concern that was brought up during public comment, we'll be addressed in the back, and we'll be talking about that in the back. It's always on our minds, and I'm speaking for my colleagues, obviously, but we appreciate you, everything you do, every single day. The things that you've done for this city always go unspoken, and they go unthanked. So we thank you. I thank you for everything you all do out there because I was with you all there, I know most of you here. I know what you all go through, I know what your families go through. So rest assured that this council, and the mayor, and administration will take everything that was said to heart. We will discuss it all, I promise you that. Thank you all again.
Thank you, sir. All right. Mayor, motion to go into executive session? No, one more. All right, executive session, on favor? Go. All right, back from executive session, it is 1:39 PM. Discussions and policy were done. Staff was directed to proceed with recommendations. Negotiations.
Just so you all are informed what this means, Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
We're directing staff to continue negotiations with your association and to continue as directed from the council. No decision was made in the back, but a directive was made to our management to continue negotiating with you all, to negotiate more. So that's the decision means.
All right.
Just have to think.
Go ahead.
To add to that, we did take into consideration everything that was spoken about right here at the podium. So just so you'll know that we didn't go to as much detail as we wanted to, but the general statement is that we hear you, and we see you, and we understand the necessities that are out there, and what we need to do. But we also have a tremendous respect for your chief and everybody that's involved on both sides, and just rest assured that every stone out there is not going to go unturned and find what we need.
All right, one more thing I want to add to that. The reason for the special meeting is because, as has been said, I think it's important for us to realize that these are important issues, and this is a core function of the city. We have to look at it in a serious fashion, and we will be doing that. I think with that being said, we will proceed forward in things that have to be done. Motion second. All right. Call for the question. On favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion pass. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mayor, and if I could ask that we adjust the agenda a little bit and take the staff reports prior to the consent agenda items?
Motion to bring up staff reports.
Motion second, on favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion pass. Proceed with staff reports. All right, ready?
All of a sudden, Mayor, I don't feel so safe anymore.
Staff reports, item number seven. Number seven submission of the proposed fiscal year 2026 handle budget as per Article Six, Section 6.02 of the city charter, which states, "At least 60 days before the end of the fiscal years, the city manager shall present to council a budget for ensuring fiscal year with accompanying budget message."
Mayor, thank you, city council. Yeah, I don't know if I should fill that or not. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, for staying, okay. All right, just so you know, we're ready to present, we've continued our work to fulfill our charter responsibilities, delivering a balanced and transparent budget for Laredo. Over the past year, we faced real challenges with the failed bond referendum, rising costs and inflationary pressures, increased demand for faster and better city services. So, today, the proposed consolidated budget totals $1.01 billion, it's a 2.8% increase over last year's, this includes over $80 million, $82 million in general fund, project investments financed through COs, tax notes, and the PPF COs. It's targeting infrastructure, public safety, and the quality of our improvements. Altogether, the city's capital program represents one of the most significant investments in Laredo's future that has happened in, over the time, building the facilities, the streets, the equipment needed to serve the growing community. There we go. That's our major, 82.7 million in our COs, tax notes, and our PPF COs, we were very creative in trying to make up the difference that within, what happened within the bond referendum. Along with this, we are presenting to you.
Go ahead.
Can I apologize for an error? But could you give us a breakdown of the slide back of the COs?
We can, yeah, this slide here, which one, how much on the COs, and yes, I'll have our budget get up there and cover this.
Okay.
I'm setting the table, and then I'm going to get out of our professionals' ways and let them go into the detail of that. You should have documents for both of them, the proposed budget is this in this document, the CIP is in this document. And so, yeah, those numbers will be coming as to how they are broken out. These financial resolutions, I want to make sure that I drive home that these are directives from the elected body to staff in how we will build the budgets. They establish how we, how our future budgets will be built, manage our finances with discipline and transparency, we have debt management standards, ensure that we borrow responsibly and protect our credit rating, we have the fund balance, our reserves policy safeguarding our financial stability for emergencies and long-term planning, there is a budget development and financial planning policy which keeps our focus on structural balance and strategic alignment. We also have the resolution out there for the council district support fund, which provides clear rules for community project funding at the district level, as well as an administrative overhead allocation policy which ensures the enterprise and the internal service funds contribute fairly to the citywide support cost. So, just so you're aware, within our enterprise funds, they don't have a legal department, they don't have a HR department, they don't have city management within their structure, we cover all of that within an administrative overhead. This year's administrative overhead, because I, and I've heard some questions about that, that essentially is contributing money back to the general fund from our enterprise funds to cover all those indirect costs that are associated with it. Within the airport, we also have Station 7, which is a station that's dedicated directly to the airport, so the airport is paying for all of the costs directly for that station within that structure for these items here. So, we have that series of financial resolutions, we have a few more that'll come forward as they are prepared, but these seem to be the ones that were most important to where we're at with our budget. They are not restrictions to anybody's ability to do that, but they do provide standards and directives for the staff as to how we build our budgets, and I think that's very important so that the public can understand what we're doing. I see that there's some confusion still out there from some of our people out there, from our public. Finally, just to help set the last little piece of this, this is more than a budget, it's a roadmap for a stronger and safer and better-prepared Laredo. We took a lot of time this year to build this budget based upon all the, all the things that were happening, we held three pre-budget workshops to bring us to even to today, we've got a document that'll lay it all out to you for that purpose, and then August 14th and 15th, because all we're doing today is we're putting together the proposed budget to meet the charter responsibilities, August 14th and 15th, when we're done, we will approve a final budget at that time, which means we meet the state requirements for our budget. Mayor, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to our professionals if there's anything that they need to add at this point, and we stand for any questions and comments, we're very happy with what staff did, every one of our departments worked hard to try to meet the conditions that we were building out, and they adjusted as we had our pre-budget workshops, so I was really, really pleased with everybody's work on this.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, Jesus Esparza, with the Budget Department, to address the question on the itemized for the bonds, you can find those on page five of the budget book, I, we just put that budget book today in front of you all, so pages five, six, and seven have the itemized items for the three issues, the first issue being the treaty obligation, 32.9 million has all the items there, page six has the proposed tax note for 25.6 million and all the projects, and the final one for the PPF CO has 24 million and the items that we're buying there for the different departments.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for that, Mr. Esparza, if, I know I'm always asking for the PDF, but for just page five, six, and seven, what you're referring to, that would be nice to have in PDF if that can be.
Yeah, in the, there's also a folder, a blue folder there, that has the message, it has a USB as well, we also have two trifles in there that is a summary for our public, one in English and one in Spanish, we will also have tomorrow, by tomorrow morning, we should have the actual budget book in the city's main website, available for our public to review as well.
All right. Any questions?
All right, we look forward, like the city manager mentioned, August 14, August 15, we still don't have a time that we will start those meetings, normally, I'm assuming it's going to be either 12 or 5, so that's pending to be scheduled, and the, we look forward in having a conversation, discussion on all the items that are relevant. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
What is the last date that we have to approve the budget official?
The 15, we have, we haven't scheduled on the 15 because then we have to have it on the first meeting of September as an introduction ordinance, and then the second reading is the final reading for the budget.
What's the deadline, absolutely today that we have to have the intro ordinance in the final reading? I, what's the deadline for the final reading?
It's the last meeting in September, which is.
But is that the deadline that we have?
Not just the meeting, what is the date that it has?
Yeah, well, if we don't have it in that meeting, and that meeting date, we have to do a special meeting for that.
October 1, right?
Yes.
So, it has to be there in October?
The second reading has to be done?
Has to be complete.
We also.
By September 30.
We also have a meeting for the tack, the setting of the tax rate, which is September...
There's a couple of dates. So, it has to be before that?
Yes.
Can we get a table of all those dates, just in case?
Let me print that out, and I'll include it in that, in that time.
All right.
I'm sorry, Mayor, but just to.
Yes, go ahead.
So, just to be clear, everything in this, in here has been discussed department by department, we're satisfying the needs of everybody that's, that, department directors and everybody came to what their needs are, and has been scrutinized and discussed by staff before us, right?
Yeah, and Mayor and Councilmember, yes, as best we could, now, keep in mind that our directors are always wishing to do more for the city, and so, but this one balances out, and everything has been discussed multiple times with every department.
Yes.
Did we act on number seven consent agenda, consent agenda? Have we made a motion on that?
We would ask Mayor that, a motion to accept the proposed budget.
All right. In the consent agenda?
No. Oh, no, the consent agenda, we have not touched yet.
Okay.
We're on item seven?
We're still on seven, yeah.
Still on seven.
Motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Number eight. Number eight.
Eight?
Is there anything to add to eight?
Motion to accept.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
What do you need from consent agenda?
We just need to act on it on the motion. Motion to approve the consent agenda two, three, four, five, and six? Motion second?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
I was reading over the policies, and I noticed that the policy was kind of like a copy paste of the resolution in most cases, I think for a policy, I think it needs to be a little more detailed in some of the areas, like, you know, how exactly are we going to handle some of these things, and what definitions, and some of it's kind of, it doesn't really, really read as a policy on some of these, but I understand that you wanted direction, so I think the motion is to go ahead and accept it, but I think, I think there still needs work to be done in terms of adoption of the final policy, so I would recommend that we approve it as a preliminary policy, but pending.
Some motion to accept with an amendment?
Yeah, I think so.
The amendment to read?
Just to, just to kind of like.
To the more comprehensive, consolidated.
Sharpen the policy a little more, on, expound on some of the specifics and like, you know, exactly as a policy, and not just like an overview type.
A motion, second, second amendment.
All of them.
All in favor?
Mayor, may I have?
Yeah. Go ahead.
So, we were looking at the resolutions, and then we do have the policies that are behind them, right? I guess I'm unsure what, does the, the resolution ties us to these policies that we are being presented with? Because the resolution, as to Councilmember Feres's point, the resolution's a little bit, it's not as tight, but isn't that, the purpose of the resolution is to focus on the policy, and we're adopting the policies as we adopt the resolution?
Correct, the resolution is a directive, and the policy would be.
And the policy is what's presented here?
Correct, and with Council, Mayor Protem is asking that we, I guess, get a more comprehensive language on the policies.
Would that substantially change what this policy is?
So, let me, unlike ordinance where it's locked in, here, the resolution is to direct staff to implement this policy, and then you can make a further directive to sharpen the policy.
And Mayor, based upon what I understand of the question and what Mayor Protem has asked for, all we're going to do is expand upon that, we're going to provide the definitions, we're going to provide the remainder of what would be in a standard operating procedure or a policy. And then, then if you're not comfortable with that, then we would bring the resolution back for an amendment for that.
Thank you. Go ahead.
With the administrative fees, are you coming back with, with a drawn-out policy, with the justifications, and what, how this was?
Thank you, yeah, and Mayor, yeah, so that administrative fee resolution is what the resolution is, the budget was built with that administrative fee in there, we can bring back comparables and everything if you'd like for further conversation, but that administrative fee is, that, did we move a policy out of that for that administrative fee, it's built into the resolution.
Built into the resolution.
There's really no policy on that, the resolution says we will build our budgets based upon that administrative fee of that percentage.
Go ahead.
So, we're raising the administrative fees to?
From, from what was it?
Five to ten.
Five to 10.
To 10, and, and that's what you built this budget on?
That's what we built this budget on.
And will that have an effect on services being raised to residents?
No, at this point, no, this is, this is funding that comes from the enterprise funds to the general fund to cover that, you will have, you will have future conversations on the rates for each one of our enterprise funds at some point in time, but it's not reflective of what this number is.
Okay, because I do think that that's the conversation that should be had and thought through.
I'm sorry, did, did.
Did you have something, Council?
I'm sorry, go ahead. I just needed to know whether the, every possible impact on administration fees was taken into consideration, there's some that rely on federal funding, obviously, and if you raise them too much, that, that goes out of the way.
So, and Mayor and Council, thank you, yeah, so just so you're aware is that the administrative fee and the federal government does recognize the justification, we have to provide justification for the administrative fee. You have two different ways that you can establish an indirect or an administrative fee within the structure, one is to do a full-blown study and do actual cost, but you're going to set that fee for a certain period of time, then you're going to go do an actual cost. The second one that is recognized by GAAP is actually the percentage basis, and it's based upon what, it's based upon a lower cursory value of walking across that. The federal government says that you cannot arbitrarily establish an administrative fee, you know, it has to be based upon the justification, this document actually helps us provide that justification, by the way, you've never had that document before, so, I mean, the 5%, 10%, there are other organizations out there that are at the 20% and 25% of the administrative fee level, we've established it at 10%, one, because we're trying to bring this into check with exactly what those costs of the services are that are outside of the enterprise fund. And just for everybody's sake, if you haven't, if you're not understanding what that administrative fee covers, city manager's office, my, my time is allocated across all of them, so anytime I'm dealing with any type of an enterprise fund, those costs are associated with that, HR, finance, any, anytime we utilize those services that are not direct expenses, that's how that is actually established, that number, I would argue that even at 10%, we are not taking the full share of what should be covered for those indirect expenses, I don't mean it in a bad way, but we are trying to make sure there, again, I believe our property taxes have subsidized those services, planning and zoning for even like the code enforcement and different things that are outside there, those are all different kinds of costs there. We always recommend that we utilize the percentage basis for this, for the administrative fee, but it is to try to get that number closer to what is actually occurring.
Go ahead.
Mr. Nebit, for the federal level, when they're reimbursing administrative fees, I know those costs can be very high, but it seems a minimum is 15% for most of those grants out there, that federal government recognizes you are able to charge essentially 15% at least for the administrative work that goes into administering the grant.
We, yeah, and Mayor, and we just believe that the 10% was a more acceptable number, coming from 5 to the 10%, because again, I think just like Councilmember Segaro had said as well, too, we don't want it to have a negative impact on our, our people either, and so the idea is to, is to balance those numbers out and try to walk into it very carefully within that structure.
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
Just like, for example, in the fund balance policy, there's a section that says, you know, if you have, fund balances can be funded from year-end surpluses, I think we do need to manage how we, better how we handle surpluses, just because it's happened, you know, we want to make sure that, that if we're approving the budget, it's for a certain amount, and I think we should be made aware there's shortfalls and if there's surpluses, so we can know, instead of, you know, you all just administratively balancing it by transferring things out beyond what was approved in the budget, so I think that's missing in the policy.
All right. Motion second. We have a motion? Go ahead. Second, sir. Second, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Amended? I accepted the amendment, Mayor, when I made the motion. Motion was amended, was accepted, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Motion to adjourn. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Getting adjourned, thank you.